Good evening. I'm Carol Barclay, past co-president of the Brooklyn Park, Osseo and Maple Grove, excuse me, League of Women Voters. I am the moderator this evening. And welcome to our candidates and to the residents who have joined us. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I welcome you. The non- we are a nonpartisan volunteer organization and we operate at a local, state and national level to study issues and encourage citizens to participate in government. We do not endorse candidates nor political parties. We invite you to look at our Facebook page, LWVBPOMG, and consider joining us in our work. We are not just women in this organization. We now have a lot of men who are active and we invite you, if you're interested, it's a good place to put your time and your energy. All candidates who have filed for the mayor, city council seats have been invited to take part in this forum and were sent a packet which outlined the forum criteria which has been adopted. However, I want to highlight a few items that were in that information. Questions were either sent to us by email or come from the audience or are of concern to our league. Attending this evening, we while you're attending this evening, you can fill out a card and hand it to the person, these two people over here in the corner are league volunteers, and they will then give those cards to me and your name or your questions will be used. No notes are permitted tonight. All campaign, I'm sorry, notes are permitted. Wrong, backwards. What is not permitted are briefing books, cell phones or laptops. All campaign literature must be outside our chamber of this building. There are two candidates running for mayor, Dwayne Poppy and Alicia Vickerman. There are two candidates running for city council, Juliana Holstrom and Mark Schultz. We're sorry that Mr. Schultz and Ms. Holstrom cannot be with us tonight. We had hoped that Ms. Holstrom might make it in time, but it's that's not looking good. Each candidate is seated alphabetical, I think, supposed to be, and will be giving an opening statement of two minutes. We have timekeepers who introduced themselves to you a few minutes ago and they will be showing you a 15 second and a stop sign for your answers. Following the opening, all candidates will have an opportunity to answer each question. The order of responses will be rotated and that, I will have to say, I hope goes well because sometimes they get a little screwed up when you try to put them in funny order. It's a lot easier just to do it in order, but we don't do that. We will not have candidate to candidate discussions as time really doesn't allow for that. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question and then they will be alerted by the timekeepers when their time is coming to an end. We will end the forum with a closing statements from each of the candidates, two minutes each, in reverse alphabetical order. Before we begin, please note that all views expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not the league. Also a reminder, there are to be no individual videotaping or photography during the forum. Please hold your applause to the end of the forum and please silence your phones and let's get started. The first question will go to Mr. Poppy and that question is, why do you think you-
Okay, opening statements.
Oh, see, I can't even do that. I'm sorry, Mr. Poppy, you have the floor, your opening statement, sorry about that. I'm just so anxious for the questions.
Wow, you should be worried, huh? Uh, no, I'm Dwayne Poppy. I look for your continued support as the mayor here. I'm looking for, it's been 10 years and three years on the council, worked tirelessly with various councils over the years and, you know, helped increase the revenue and reduce the expenses, be able to, you know, balance our budget and be able to put our city on solid financial footing, you know, bringing us from that A minus to a double A strong rating and having, bringing development into town and, you know, and be able to set up the capital improvement plan and the financial management plan to, you know, which helps our city to be where we're at now. You know, and I'll just continue, you know, to work at attracting businesses and development in town that makes sense, that really fits in the fabric of our community here and just enhances the, you know, the life that we all choose to live here and enjoy. And, you know, to continue with collaborate with different community groups and, you know, to help kind of unify the city and then be able to look for other resources to help us, you know, continue our efforts here as a city. Thanks.
Ms. Vickerman.
Thank you. I'm Alicia Vickerman. I'm running for the office of mayor of Osseo as well. In my time on Osseo City Council, I've served on the EDA, the Human Resources Committee, intergovernmental relations, Parks and Rec, as well as representing Osseo's interest on the Metro Blue Line Extension Corridor Management Committee, my favorite one to say. My wife Marissa and I have lived in Osseo for 13 years now. We have two young children who attend school here. We've become a part of the community. We love living here because of the amenities and the close knit community. The reason I want to be your mayor is that I believe I can be a great ambassador for Osseo. I sing Osseo's praises pretty much everywhere I go. I'm a calm leader and I try to solve problems by finding a common goal. I'm willing to consider all sides of an issue and collaborate with others. My main point of focus is bringing as many voices to the issues as possible and listening to residents and being a resident representative. I want to be a part of the change that I'd like to see.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the questions. And, Mr. Poppy, you're the first one. What are your skill sets and your experiences that you'll draw from to keep high levels of city services without just raising taxes?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. We've, you know, really focused on that over the years, you know, as three years as the on the council and 10 years as mayor now, I mean, that's really been kind of a goal that we've always looked is, is how can, how can we continue to improve our services and deliver in the most cost effective way without going to the tax wall? You know, we've looked at other opportunities to increase revenue and a lot of that's been through, you know, bringing development in, you know, whether it be Five Central, you know, the Rochon Project, you know, the villas over at Berkshire. I mean, there was a number of developments that we brought into town to help, you know, bolster our financial strength of the city all without, you know, just making the easy choice of raising taxes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vickerman.
So, one of my strongest strengths is finding a way to bring people together and to solve problems. So, when we're talking about the city's financial health, we do have that double A bonding. It's not a guarantee and it takes responsible stewardship as we have done. However, we have to be careful. We've used some of our revenue to try to balance not raising taxes and I think we really have to push some of our partnerships to make sure we're bringing in any financial assistance we could possibly get from our county or state partnerships. I think there's more that Osseo should be getting out of those relationships.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, and we start with Ms. Vickerman. What do you base your decisions on when you have to vote?
Excuse me. Thank you. I try to be open minded and hear all of the information before I make any decision. Sometimes I find that my first impression, I get more information and that might change and I, I don't believe in just sticking to my original thought. I would rather be open to the conversation. My biggest point is that I want to get down to the root of the issue and find what our common goal really is. In any situation, I think a lot of us find out that we actually have the same goal, we just have a different means for getting there. So, I'm into breaking down the conversation and finding out first what that common goal is and then discussing the different ways we can get there.
Thank you. Mr. Poppy.
I guess onto my decision to vote, I mean, as I was been, you know, be able to get input from everyone, you know, be able to understand the, what the issue is from all sides. And at the end of the day, you have to make the decision what's best for, you know, the community, not only short term but long term. And sometimes, you know, and you have to really, I think the knack is understanding who the vocal minority is or is it the majority of the people that are, you know, that you're hearing from and be able to kind of sift through that and try to understand everyone's perspective and again, to seek common ground on that, you know, because, you know, fear is fuel and if they fear something, I mean, they'll end up, you know, on the wrong side of the thing. And so you have to understand where that's coming from and be able to help make that decision.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Poppy, what is your vision for the city?
Vision is kind of the same it's been, you know, since I got here, you know, increase the financial health of the city all while in, you know, delivering the most cost effective services to the community at, at the best that we can do. You know, continue to look for development, you know, be able to increase our tax base without, you know, having to continue to just tax the residents, you know, and, and bring in the businesses that kind of fit in the fabric of the community and, you know, the place that we all, you know, love to live and work and, I mean, we've got a great community here and it's just finding ways to continue to enhance it.
Thank you. Ms. Vickerman?
Well, my future plans for Osseo include the expansion of Borbon Park. I think that's probably the most exciting future endeavor we have in front of us right now. And, and again, I want to touch on, I want to make sure we're focusing on those strong partnerships with our county and state legislators and making sure that we are fully tapping into those resources because as residents, we need benefits that don't create too much of a burden on taxpayers. And it's a balancing act to figure out wants versus needs and what we all want is the best for our community and we're here because we like it. So, we want to do the best work we can for them.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Poppy. Explain whether you believe a relationship between police and the community need to be strengthened.
Can you read that again?
Explain whether you believe a relationship or the relationships between the police and the community need to be strengthened.
You know, we've got an outstanding police force here, you know, I mean, with the bike patrols, the, you know, downtown lock checks, I mean, anyone can call up and have their homes checked while they're gone. I mean, I think, you know, with the chief here, he's done an outstanding job with community policing and, you know, very active in the community with handing out free ice cream stickers to kids that are wearing bike helmets. So, I mean, I, is there ways to improve it? Possibly, but I, they do a great job. And, I mean, they, they've got, you know, they've got outstanding relationships with the business owners, with the residents, and, I mean, they've got a great eye and a heart for this community.
Ms. Vickerman.
Thank you. So, in my time, I've also been involved in doing police interviews for new police candidates coming in and one question I've always asked them was, how do you, how do you see yourself approaching someone who might be automatically kind of triggered with a trauma response just by seeing a police officer? And the answers I've gotten back are very mindful and sincere when they say that they want to try and make people more comfortable with them. And I think that's what goes along with policies that have been in place with community policing already in our community because when you're familiar with someone, you know them, you know their intent, you can feel a lot more comfortable and, and we're working on that and doing quite well.
Thank you. Okay, again with you, Ms. Vickerman, the next question. How would you strengthen the business climate?
So, first and foremost, I, I trust the businesses to know what they're doing and know what they're looking for, but as city leaders, I think that we can create a culture of collaboration with businesses. So where there's a need, we can work together without impeding. It's a, it's a symbiotic relationship. It's not one taking any control over the other. We work together and we're stronger together when, when businesses know that they can ask for help and when the community can trust that we have savvy business owners who are, are doing the best work that can be done.
Thank you. Mr. Poppy?
You know, it kind of has been, it's collaboration and listening to the business owners, you know, I mean, rewind the clock, there was a lot of vacant storefronts up and down Central Avenue. We've worked hard to attract businesses that again, fit in the fabric of the community and needs that people want here. And again, and they, you know, draw customers into town, which then eventually they feed off each other and I think now you're starting to see the advent of the downtown kind of business group, holding different events and, and kind of sales on the weekends or, you know, special promotion on an evening, that there's a lot more collaboration and, you know, from the city's perspective, we've always been there to support and help promote those, not only from the city, but on the EDA side and what we can do.
Thank you. The next question again is Mr. Poppy. What are your goals as an elected official? What do you hope to accomplish? You've-
You know, I guess, I guess what I hope to accomplish is, you know, the financial viability of the city, you know, and be able to, you know, listen to residents' concerns and businesses' concerns and, you know, continue to move the city forward and have it on solid financial footing.
Thank you. Ms. Vickerman, how would you strengthen the business climate?
Well, I think that the city leaders have an opportunity to create a community that businesses end up wanting to serve. So if we focus on diversity and inclusion as residents and a city, we can highlight our community in a way that attracts diverse businesses. I think we already have a welcoming and diverse business community existing and the more the city can shine a light on that, the more we can attract more to come.
And the follow up was, what are your goals or what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, along with some of the other items I already mentioned about, you know, park expansion, there is some future development coming and that's happening at, at a rate that I would say isn't, we're taking it slow and steady. And that's how I like to see things done, to make sure it's, it's a well thought out plan.
Hey, thank you. Okay. This first one will be to Ms. Vickerman. Do you think all Osseo residents have adequate and easy access to healthy food?
I can't be, I can't be entirely certain. I hope so. I know that we do have, we do have access to markets in the area that can be more affordable for families, but readily available within Osseo. We do have a small grocer. I don't know if, if that's accessible for somebody to do the entirety of their food shopping, but that's a great question.
Thank you. Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, to say that everybody does, I mean, it's probably, probably no, because obviously everybody's an individual and they've got individual needs and access to resources, you know, but that's one thing we've worked, you know, partnered with CROSS, you know, help with that and be able to support that program, be able to have people that have access to that, the food, you know, that was part of the reason with the community orchard that we put in to be able to have access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And then also too, you know, we've done a lot with the Nest Backpack Program along with the school to be able to supply food to the, to kind of the homeless kids at the high school, to be able to provide, you know, a food option for them there as well.
Thank you. Mr. Poppy, what has Osseo done well that supports seniors and what needs to be done better?
You know, I think, you know, we've got a strong senior program, you know, through, you know, the different programs we have at the community center with, you know, and kind of establishing, you know, our senior activities coordinator and they do a great job bringing in, we've got, you know, other events, whether it be, you know, we got yoga, we've got, you know, chair workouts, we had different things for the seniors up at the senior center. You know, and then again, it goes back to trying to create that livable, walkable area where people can still move around town fairly easily, you know, without having mobility issues to get in a vehicle or do that, you know. We also have the Osseo Trolley during the summer that anybody calls, you need to get picked up to, brought to the store, you know, and they'd be able to move that around at no cost for the residents.
Thank you. Ms. Vickerman?
My impression is that we have a pretty vibrant set of programs and items available for, for seniors on top of just, you know, the walkable downtown, like was mentioned here, the, the trolley, I think that's a very unique feature that, that not a lot of communities can have and we have that because of our size. I think that's able to work on top of the great programming that some of our residents put on for, for seniors as well. My impression, looking around and seeing a lot of people out and about who might be living in some of those senior communities, it looks to me like it's a good place to live for seniors.
Thank you. When assessing your priorities for the city, where do you rank the city as protecting the environment? Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, we're always looking for ways, you know, to continue to, you know, reduce the carbon footprint, but at the same time, I mean, we don't have, we, we're a small land mass here, so we don't have a lot of opportunities. You know, we've looked at solar both here and on top of public works, but based on the direction of the sun and the trees around it, the calculations didn't make sense, you know, so I mean, it's something that we need to continue to work on, but, you know, there's, right now, there wasn't a lot of opportunities for that.
Okay. Ms. Vickerman?
So, I think what we have looked into up to this point, looking for solar panels, that's, that's great. I think that there might be in the future as technology changes, I think it's worth revisiting and we should always kind of have a running dialogue going about that to try and make changes where we can. People individually can, can make choices in their household, how they use energy and whether they choose compost or recycling. We have a great recycling program that is very easy to follow. I would say overall, I think that we should be looking at things from a mindset of trying to reduce our, our carbon footprints where we can and, and continuing to revisit those when we rule something out, let's look back at it later if, if circumstances have changed at all.
Thank you. Okay. This one would be Ms. Vickerman. We've talked about business, encouraging business and you've talked about what you've done in the past. How have you gone about recruiting or actually going out and interacting with kind of the world of Minnesota and recruiting for this particular place, this city?
Well, I think that one of the best tools that we have as city leaders is to, to create the atmosphere that businesses want to come to. I don't, I don't feel that it's necessarily on me to come up with all the ideas for a business owner to come to town with. I know that when there are ideas out there, I, I support and encourage them.
Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, I've been out actively recruiting businesses into town, you know, my day job, I do commercial real estate, you know, so I know that different groups are moving around within the market, you know, and be able to draw them in. I mean, one perfect example is, you know, Rochon, you know, I knew they were in the market looking to build a new office building, they were looking, you know, actually down in Plymouth, and then we had a discussion with them to be able to say, hey, here's a good land site, be able to build a building and then we'll be able to put that deal together, bringing a lot of employees and a lot of disposable income into town to be able to do the bars and restaurants. And again, kind of at, another example, at Five Central there, be able to know our land site, know a few key developers, be able to have a discussion with them, to be able to bring them in and bring the project in and be able to accomplish that. And again, I mean, a big win for the city there.
Hey, thank you. Do you feel that Osseo has adequate affordable housing for residents? And that would be Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of the homes here, I mean, are kind of the NOAA model, I mean, naturally affordable housing, you know, I mean, they, with, with the different, with the, the for sale homes, the rental homes and then, you know, some of the apartments, you know, we, I think we've got a full life cycle of different houses within our community. And obviously, you know, unlike our new project we just approved, we always add affordability component, I mean, both at Five Central and the new apartment project. I was looking at and cognizant of that, that that's an important issue and to be able to have that, have that option here within the city to, you know, help build that diverse community.
Ms. Vickerman?
Well, I think it is important to have a variety of housing types and we do have that here in Osseo, but I would agree, going forward, it's always an important thing to make sure if there's any new development, that we do include some affordable aspects because there, there really is little to no opportunity for any new construction, single family homes. And there's a, there's a subset, I think, between seniors and young professionals who seniors might be leaving the single family homes and young professionals coming in. I think that Osseo is a great place to start kind of establishing your life. So, when you think about either, either downsizing or getting into your first home, we need to make sure that, that we have a variety of types of housing options available.
Thank you. I had another one here, I'm just seeing what, where'd it go? Oh, no, that wasn't it. Is Osseo a safe community and what needs to be improved or not? And that first question would go Ms. Vickerman.
By and large, yes, I do think Osseo is a safe community, especially by, by comparison considering we are not rural. We are kind of one of those first string suburbs, so I think there's a certain amount of activity you might, might consider to be normal. However, we're unique and a little bit lucky in that we have, we have a police force that that covers only one square mile and that- And that, that makes it pretty unique and you can get help quite quickly if you need it.
Thank you. Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, I, I believe Oseo's safe, you know, I mean, we've had, we've continued to add patrols. You know, we used to have just one police on 12-hour shifts. But then we added an overlap three-to-three shift to be able to handle the evening rush hour and then kind of bar closed again, to be able to provide additional safety for the people. You know, and, and the thing is, you know, that there's, I think there's more that goes on here than people realize. And I think our police force does a great job of being able to handle those calls and, and in a professional manner and kind of de-escalate some situations that could, could rise to a level that, you know, we don't want to see. So I mean, I've got to commend, they've done a great job to keep our community safe. And that's part of just knowing the people here in the community.
Thank you. Okay. Did you get that question?
I did. Yep, I got that one first.
All of a sudden, I'm going.
I can go again.
Wait a minute, I have you marked that you did, but I want to make sure. Everybody gets equal opportunity here. Okay, the next question is, what makes your city a special place to live and work? And what could be done to make it better? And we'll start that with Mr. Poppy.
What, what makes this place special is, is the people. You know, it's that small-town charm. You know, every suburb, every place you go to tries to emulate what we've had here since, you know, 1875. That livable, walkable community downtown, we've got, you know, the bars, restaurants, post office. We've got, and we have streets and, streets and avenues, you know. So it's, it's that, it's along with, you know, the, the, the events that we have in town. You know, we've worked a long time to get the park put together. You know, that'll be nice to get done, kind of a centralized gathering place right in town. And that's taken a number of years to put that project together. But I mean, those are, and again, just to continue to attract development and businesses that fit in this fabric and make this, continue to make this a great place to live.
Vickerman?
Well, for me, the best part about Oseo is kind of the, the wave. It's very Minnesota, but it's part of the, the atmosphere that's here. You know, your family can walk up to dinner, have ice cream. You're going to see friends along the way, maybe end up picking up, an extra kid ends up coming with you. It's, it's idyllic in a way that it, it's not guaranteed. And, and the reason it's stayed that way is because the people here make sure it stays that way. And, and that's why we haven't lost the charm.
Thank you. How would you work to represent all residents while in office? Or, and you both have been already, so that's, you probably already know the answer to that question. Mr. Poppy?
Again, it's just listening, you know, and, and understanding. You know, at, at the end of the day, I mean, disagreements are natural, but division is, is a choice. And unless you're willing to listen to the other side and try to figure out what the common ground is, you know, that, that's really the key. And to be able to continue to move things forward, but understand that usually the best decision is somewhere in the middle.
Ms. Vickerman?
Along the same lines, it goes along with listening, but also I, I know that sometimes as a leader, I can get challenged on a decision I've made after the fact. And anytime that happens, I, I will take the criticism. But I will kindly ask that if this comes up and you feel really strongly about it, well, let's talk about it, because I don't know what you're thinking ahead of time. I, I can only know that until you, until you communicate and tell me what's going on. So that's one thing I would do is try to, every opportunity I have, make sure that the lines of communication are open so that we can go down the process of finding the common ground.
Thank you. Okay. The next one. Do you feel Oseo has a role in the development of the Proposals for Light Rail? And what is projected to come through and that rail that is projected to come through Brooklyn Park? Starting with Ms. Vicker, um, yes, Ms. Vickerman?
I, I do believe that Oseo has a role in that. That's, that's why I go to these meetings and that's why I've been going on some, some tours of what that new route looks like. Oseo's interest in it is making sure that we have some point of pedestrian connectivity. Obviously, someone who lives in Oseo can drive over there. But part of the reason of having a light rail station is to provide alternate routes of transportation. So a lot of conversations are going in so that our county partners know that we need to make sure that we have a walkable, safe, continuous trail or sidewalk that goes all the way from Central Avenue down to the station. So we can get there if, if people want to make different transportation decisions in Oseo as well.
Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we have to have a say in it. You know, I mean, it's just another amenity to the city, you know, be able to walk over to the light rail station or take a bike or, you know, however you want to get over there and then get downtown and, you know, all the way to the airport or the Mall of America without having to jump in the car. You know, again, it, it would just be an amenity for it. And it's the alignment and the connectivity with it is, you know, what's most important.
Thank you. Well, it is about 7:06. We have gone through about 19 questions. With two people, it goes pretty fast. So I think we will now go to our closing statements. And, excuse me. We'll start with, I believe, Ms. Vickerman, as you, you started first last time.
Thank you. So thank you, League of Minnesota, uh, League of Women Voters, for providing this platform. I believe it's important for us to answer these questions. I want to say thank you to my friends and neighbors who've supported me in running for mayor and wanting me to represent them. I also want to say thank you to Mayor Poppy. He understood that I'm running because I think it's important that voters have a choice and for treating me with kindness and respect throughout this campaign season. If elected, I would do everything in my power to keep Oseo in good financial health, seek out creative opportunities for revenue, and while paying homage to the past, highlight and respect the diverse community we are becoming. I think we can continue to build our community around a shared commitment to inclusivity and modeling that to our neighboring communities. I will work diligently for my fellow residents and I hope to earn your support. Remember, you can vote at Oseo City Hall here now, between now and November 8th. Thank you.
Right, yeah, thank you for the opportunity and everyone to come out and listen to us talk about the different issues. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, you know, kind of the goal, as we discussed, is, you know, continued financial health of the city, you know, continue to listen to residents, continue to move smart development forward, you know, finding ways to, you know, increase the revenue and decrease the, the expenses. You know, I mean, we've got some challenges ahead, you know, with, we've been hit with a perfect storm with some of our different funding sources and, you know, we just got, we've got to work through it. You know, we were in a lot worse shape a number of years ago and we've worked through it. And, you know, we'll continue to find a solution and work through that, you know. And I think, you know, kind of going into, you know, whether we're in a financial crisis or going to be in one, I mean, kind of let it out of the last one. And I think, you know, we have an opportunity to do it again and lead us again. But, you know, I appreciate the time everybody put in to put this together and coming out and listening to us talk. And thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the audience for coming. And thank you to CXX, who is broadcasting, live broadcasting today. And it will be replayed, check your schedules through CCX. And you can tell your neighbors if you would like to tell, I'd like to alert them that this is available. We hope that you will vote. And if you have more questions on voting, the League of Women Voters has a, a line or a internet service that's called vote411.org. And you can put your information of who you are and where you are. And a lot of information can be there at your fingertips to find maybe people that you really don't know about and that you would like more information on. And be sure to vote. And thank you very much. Thank you to our facilit, or our, not facilitators, but to our question person and to our timekeepers. Thank you. Good night.